Jackie Patterson tonight from the National NAACP Climate Justice Program. Susan Fokes from the American Lung Association. Jonathan Banks from the Clean Air Task Force. Trudy Fisher, Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality. Thomas Dobbs, State Epidemiologist. Mark Woffman, Environmental and Resource Strategies Director for Mississippi Power. And Kathy Edlin with the NAACP and Ruth Story with the NAACP have organized this program. So I'm gonna introduce Mayor Hughes at this point, and then we'll have to...
Thank you, Howard. Good evening. How's everybody doing this afternoon? It is great to be in Gulfport. I want to tell you that what we've been telling folks is that we're open for business and here for a good time. I'm very proud to be certain of this capacity, and I'm honored to be asked to make some welcome remarks to you today. I think it was good any time as a community we come together to assess not just our environmental quality, water, and really any aspects of our city that we take an introspective look with the approach that we want to embrace things that not only affect Gulfport, but really our entire coast with the understanding that what benefits one benefits all, what affects one affects all. And today, I launched a one-coast approach, really an attitude, that I'm hoping that we'll all take a look at and understand that anything we do here, whether it's jobs, whether it's impact on our environment, that we hope that will have positive impacts that will reverberate across the entire Gulf Coast, and we're gonna be inclusive about that and we're sharing it with everybody. Anybody who wants to learn to use this and go online and get the logo, it's basically for the promotion and talking of our region and really letting folks know that we are one cohesive group moving forward trying to be more economically prepared in our area. Along those lines, I always like to think when we're talking with our city leaders in particular, to embrace looking at what is possible. We have issues, there's always gonna be something we need to be working on, and the fact is as long as we're working and trying to move forward, it's good. But if we're looking at what is possible, and if we're critical, that we have a mind that I'm not just simply critical, but that we look toward solutions and find out what can make our situation better. And in this particular context for tonight, that we try to find things and have discussions about our balanced approach, that while we need to be good environmental stewards, we also need to do those things that are gonna attract companies and business and opportunities for our region for our people. So I welcome you here tonight, I'm honored to be here, and just best wishes for a very successful and productive meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And we'd like to have Bishop Black now offer the blessing and then we can leave.
Would everybody from the head table please proceed to the... That we are having a meeting. I want to commend the NAACP for dealing with an issue or with issues that are definitely having an impact on our communities, and not just our communities, on all communities along the Gulf Coast and throughout the state and nation. This is something that we all at some point are gonna have to have a meeting of demands on, if we're gonna continue to work and prosper and live and have good health and live long lives and leave something to our children that they can also cherish. So with that in mind, I want to once again say thank you to the NAACP, to all the people who are here to tell us what we need to know, what we can learn, and I will say that I'm a little bit disappointed in the turnout tonight, you know, this is really issues that everyone should be concerned about, but we'll just keep doing it, keep doing it, keep doing it. When they get those higher electric bills, they'll start coming to the beans. Thank you very much.
So I'd like to first recognize the public officials that have come out. Supervisor William Martin, of course, but Trudy Fisher, we certainly thank her for coming tonight, the Director of DEQ. It's wonderful to have her here to ask the questions, and we really appreciate her coming down. Representative Sonia Williams Barnes is here tonight, and Mayor Billy Hughes, of course, that we heard from earlier. Can I ask if any other local elected officials are in the room? Oh, hello. And of course, Ms. Christine Bryce. Are there any pastors in the room? I'd like to recognize the clergy that came up tonight. I see Bishop Black. I see Reverend Hartwell. So I'd like to recognize y'all. And Reverend Wallace, very good, thank you for coming out. And so in the interest of kind of moving the agenda along, because we've had a lot of people who came tonight to have this conversation, which is, of course, an important conversation. We obviously need energy, but the challenges we face right now, both with the cost of energy and with the complications of the Kemper County Plant and the fate of Plant Watson, that's a pretty big conversation to have, and we're gonna try to have it tonight. So I'm gonna start off by introducing Jackie Patterson, the National NAACP Director of the Climate Justice Program, and let her do a presentation to get us started. And I hope the sound works well. Y'all, I'd like to apologize in advance that we've had a little technical issue, so I hope the sound is workable here.
So I just sent you a bit of a overview of the course of the NAACP, the NAACP doesn't have a low member, that what we talked about, 378 coal-fired power plants throughout the country, and we ranked them, and based on their, what we call our Environmental Justice Score. So I'll talk a little bit more about what that means. But the pleasure of being with you all today. My mom is actually from Mississippi, so I always enjoy being down here and working with you, so I look forward to having this presentation with you. I'll just speak for a few minutes about this, just to give you a sense of this, then there'll be other people that'll talk about other aspects of the impact of coal in communities here. So I'll talk a little bit about disproportionate exposure of coal-fired power plants to communities of color and low-income communities, and what that looks like in terms of the health and wellbeing of those communities. And then I'll talk also about the Jack Watson Plant specifically, and what it looks like in terms of the Gulfport profile, and then the economic reality, because we recognize that there's a relationship between coal plants and communities. And then we'll talk about alternatives, because it's not the only way in terms of having a coal-based electricity plant. So first of all, in terms of disproportionate exposure, when we did our report, we found that out of the 378 coal-fired power plants throughout the country, that they are disproportionately located in communities of color and low-income communities. So there's more communities of color, people of color, African-American, Latino, Native American folks, who are exposed to pollution from coal plants than white Americans who are exposed to pollution from coal plants. And that was troubling because of some of the reasons we talked about in terms of the health impact. So one of the things we found out is that 78% of African-Americans live within 30 miles of a coal-fired power plant, and the 30 miles is kind of the zone of pollution, you know, the range of the pollution and how it affects people in the 30-mile radius of the plant. We also found that overall, not just in terms of coal plants, but in terms of toxic facilities, African-Americans are more likely to... African-American families making $50,000 a year are more likely to live next to a toxic facility than a white family making $15,000 a year. So it also gives you a sense of not only the fact that we're being impacted by coal plants, but we're also being impacted by other toxic facilities, which means that we're more susceptible to what they call cumulative impacts. We have coal pollution, toxic pollution affecting our communities, and so the coal plants are just one of those types of problems. And we work on this issue in Chicago. Actually, there's a community-based organization in Chicago working on two coal plants there for years and years because they were concerned about the pollution there. The Harvard School of Public Health did a study there and found that they attributed 1,000 asthma hospitalizations, asthma-taken patients, and 40 deaths per year to those two coal-fired power plants that were located in Chicago. And last year, they were successful after a lot of activism in shutting down those two plants. And they, with that, made sure that each and every worker in those plants was transitioned to another job, so they didn't put anybody out of work. So they both protected the health and wellbeing of the community, and they made sure that the workers weren't impacted by shutting down those two plants. So as I said before, that we're not only looking at our impacts of coal, we're also disproportionately located next to other toxic facilities. This is a picture of a high school, St. Chaplin High School, Houston, Texas, and that oil refinery that is burning behind it is one of five oil refineries within a 10-mile radius of that school. And unfortunately, this picture isn't uncommon picture. We have communities across the country where we're being bombarded basically by these different toxic facilities, and that's a concern to us. And this is just another picture of a coal-fired power plant that's right next to a park where people work and live and play, and they fish out the water next door. That's in River Rouge Park in Michigan, and that's the River Rouge Coal Fired Power Plant. And unfortunately, because of the way, what it takes to run a coal-fired power plant, it uses a lot of water in terms of the process that it uses to generate energy, and that means that they're often located, almost always located next to a waterway. And we, as communities of color, are disproportionately fisher folk, so we actually are fishing to put food on our table. And here is a picture of someone who is fishing out the water next to a coal plant, and the yellow arrow is next to the pipe that goes into the water. And we find that the waterways next to these coal plants are often polluted with mercury and other toxins that come out of these coal plants. And then when we start to look at what the impact is on health, that one of the major impacts is respiratory illnesses. Coal-fired power plants have been sulfur dioxide, nitrogen oxide, and other toxic emissions or pollution that drive respiratory illnesses, and asthma is one of them. African-American children are three times as likely to enter into the hospital for asthma attacks, and twice as likely to die from asthma. We as African-Americans are more likely to have lung disease, less likely to smoke. So we begin to see that the relationship between our environment and these diseases that we're seeing that are disproportionately happening in our communities. And then what does this actually do for our children? This is a person who lives within 2,000 coal-fired power plant, who frequently has asthma attacks and is always restricted to not being able to go outside and go to school on poor air quality days. And we'll hear more from other panelists about the air quality here in Gulfport and what that is specifically here. But this child, Antoine, his grandparents gave me this picture of him, and they felt like it was emblematic of his life, and he's always looking on, even if it might not be a cis little girl who's in the fountain, but she's playing in the fountain, and he's looking on, cut him impossibly. And they took this picture, and they said they thought that this really represented his life. He's always looking on, not even playing like the other children, not even going to school like the other children, et cetera. And then when we include the fact that often when the coal-fired power plants are located in a community or other toxic facilities that are located in the community, that the property values of those communities are lower, and property values are what actually finance our school systems, we begin to see that we have children who are either out of school because they're sick, or they're in school and they have attention deficit disorder, which is driven by lead exposure, and lead is another toxin that comes out of these coal plants. Then they have under-resourced schools that are in dilapidated conditions or don't have high-quality teachers. We start to see the layers of impact on our children's lives and our children's possibilities in life. And then we tie it to another aspect of the NAACP work, which is the school-to-prison pipeline. Around the country, there's been studies that have found that adolescents operating on third-grade level, on grade level by the time they reach the third grade, they're more likely to enter into the criminal justice system, just because they're not in a formalized setting, they're not learning, they're not really being able to explore those possibilities. And then we'll be tied in with the behavioral problems that's associated with something toxic exposure. We again start to see the layers of impact in our children's lives. So another tie that we see with coal-fired power plants is that they're the number-one emitter of carbon dioxide, which is the number-one greenhouse gas that drives climate change. And here in Gulfport, you kind of sit at the epicenter of a lot of the impact of climate change, whether it's the effect of farmer in terms of dry, you know, once fertile layer that's now dry, or whether it's the effect in terms of the extreme weather events that are plaguing this area and causing this kind of untold devastation. And then we also see this spike in tornadoing that's saving around the country as well. And so, and then we also are seeing this rise in flooding as well, not necessarily even associated with a flood or with a hurricane, but just more rains are causing more flooding. We see this happen in 2011 in Port Myers, Mississippi. So just kind of give you a little bit of a context of the relationship between coal plants and both our health, our economics, our educational system, our education of our children, as well as our environment, the environment we depend on, to keep a theme. So speaking specifically about Plant Jack Watson, these are just some stats. The coal unit came online in 1968, it's owned by Southern Company, Mississippi Power, when we're here. Annual electricity produces approximately $5 million. 91, like 5,000. I'm making my hours. It's 2009 sulfur dioxide emissions of 5... I'll read it. 5... All right, I'm gonna have to go back and tell you that. But 2008 to 2010, average annual sulfur dioxide emissions were 21,929 tons. In 2008 to 2010, average natural dioxide emissions were 9,644 tons. And as I told you before, sulfur dioxide, natural dioxide, both are responsible for respiratory issues that have been tied by various health professionals to respiratory illness, and I think some of the other folks will talk more about that. And carbon dioxide emissions, which will give you that number, is the number-one driver of greenhouse gas emissions and the number-one driver of climate change. These are some of the other emissions that come from Jack Watson Plant, other coal plants. Mercury, arsenic, lead, particulate matter. Mercury causes nerve damage. Lead causes attention deficit disorder, learning difficulty. Hydrochloride, methane, formaldehyde, other pollutants, others causing other forms of respiratory illness. These are the folks who are being impacted by Jack Watson's pollution. 22,921 people living within 3,000 of the coal-fired power plants, the average day company's around $20,000. The percentage of folks are 24.9% people of color. And so the plant earned a grade of D minus because of those five factors: the level of sulfur dioxide, the level of nitrogen dioxide emissions, the number of people who are living near the plant, the percentage of people who are low-income, and the percentage of people who are people of color. So we really also just wanted to wrap up with some numbers around the economic reality. A lot of times we talk about not being able to afford to transition to clean energy, but unfortunately, there's some investments being made in the types of policies that aren't necessarily good for our environment, for our health and wellbeing. This is the number, the amount of money that's being spent on lobbying by these different companies. Unfortunately, when you look at the lobbying activities of these companies, a lot of it is around anti-regulatory policies, so making sure that we don't have regulations, strong regulations around mercury, arsenic, lead, and so forth. Some of our speakers could speak more about this, as well as making sure that we don't have policies to mandate clean energy and energy efficiency. So we really need to be looking at some of these investments and turning them in the right direction. Southern Company in particular opposed the plan to create a national electricity market that would have advanced our efforts around renewable energy. These are just some of the other policies that we're looking at advancing around clean energy and energy efficiency, and where Mississippi stands in terms of having these policies. Energy efficiency standard, which means we need to be reducing the amount of energy we use every year. Mississippi doesn't have that standard. Renewable energy standard, which says we need to be using, getting a certain amount of our energy from clean energy sources. Mississippi doesn't have that standard. And then net metering policies, which 43 of the other states across the country have, Mississippi is one of only seven states that don't have that. And that metering policies allows you as a consumer to have a solar panel on your roof, and then if you get more energy than you use from that solar panel, you could actually sell that excess energy back to the grid, but they save them out, you would have purchased it for... And again, 43 states across the country allow for us to do that, and Mississippi is only one of, one of only seven states that don't allow that. And then this is just a look at the CEO compensation for some of the companies that we're looking at that are perpetrators of the biggest, the most, the greatest number of what we call our EJ offenders in terms of coal-fired power plants that aren't performing well in our environmental justice ranking. So just looking at our key considerations as we move forward in terms of thinking about what you would want to do about the effect of the pollution from Jack Watson is affecting your community, is really looking at what kind of revenue are you getting from the tax that in terms of what Jack Watson is contributing to the tax base that's a real consideration that needs to be thought about? What kinds of jobs are held in Jack Watson Plant, and where, you know, what's working there, and what will happen to folks depending on what you decide to do with Jack Watson Plant pollution? And then, you know, to what extent is the community surrounding Jack Watson getting electricity from the plant? And where will you get your electricity depending on what you do with the Jack Watson Plant? So those are important. These are some options in terms of pollution controls, which, again, you might take the water, yeah, get the pollution out of the air, because it concentrates into the coal ash, which is also under-regulated. Conversion to clean forms of energy, plant closure, those are some of the options that people look at in other places when they have these types of difficulties with their coal plants. And so we also look at what we want to do in terms of moving, in terms of looking at other forms of energy. When we look at the relationship with African-American communities and low-income communities and energy, these are some numbers that are important to think about. In 2009, African-American communities spent $40 million nationwide on energy. We had 1.1% of energy jobs, and had 0.001% of revenue from the energy sector. So it gives you a sense of the fact that we are, unfortunately, close to these facilities that are causing the different problems that I laid out, but we aren't really a part of the actual system in terms of the energy sector, in terms of the jobs and revenue and so forth. So that's something we need to look at as we think about our future in terms of our relationship with the energy sector. And this is in a context of double-digit unemployment for our communities. We have white wealth that's 20 times that of black wealth, and this is kind of relationship we have to a major trillion-dollar industry. And so as the NAACP, we're really looking to move towards energy efficiency, looking towards clean energy. This is a friend of mine who lives in a state that actually has net metering. He gets all of his electricity from his solar panels, and he has enough excess that he actually sells it back to the grid. When I was visiting his house that day, his meter was actually running backwards because he was earning money that was going back to the grid. And he also gets his heating and cooling from the geothermal system. And just to wrap up, we also are looking at how we're gonna be able to create more jobs and look at generating less pollution through changing to clean energy, through changing to zero-waste society, and there's a number of jobs that can be made from that. And we also want to look at local ownership of programs of energy, of how we handle our waste and so forth. And local ownership creates two to three times more jobs than having jobs and opportunities concentrated in certain areas and so forth. So that's my presentation in that shell. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jackie. Everyone, unfortunately, the next person, and this really is unfortunate, the next person we were expecting, Janine Juddell from the EPA, who is the Deputy Director of Air Pesticide and Toxic Management. She won't be able to participate because of the government shutdown. And I know we might chuckle about that, but it's really terrible, because she watches one of the main concerns here, which is, as we know, the coast has a high level of breathing diseases and cancer and other diseases, but African-American communities, unfortunately, again, particularly North Gulfport, the youth have very high levels of asthma. And the nitrous, the oxides of nitrogen and the oxides of sulfur that come out of this plant that are regulated, those are some of the sources of these asthma conditions. So it's very unfortunate, but she's not gonna be able to address us. So our next person is gonna be Jonathan Banks, and he's Senior Climate Policy Advisor with the Clean Air Task Force. He's coming in on Skype, and so Jackie's gonna bring him on now, and he is going to address us on some of these clean air issues. Okay, the report from Jonathan, we've, I just learned, Jackie just told me that unfortunately we lost our internet connection as I was speaking, so if we get Jonathan on, we're gonna bring him on. But fortunately, we have another great speaker, Ms. Trudy Fisher, who can come up now and address us on some of these issues, Director of DEQ. Yes?
Thank you for, thank you for the invitation, and thank you to the NAACP for hosting this meeting. If any of you heard any of the news this evening, I'm gonna say, repeat myself, anytime we get together and talk about issues that are a concern of youth, of yours, it's a good thing. If it's a concern of yours, it's a concern of ours, and we want to share information and learn about each other's issues and talk. We want tonight to be the beginning of the dialogue. I'm gonna lead into this a little bit better, how about that? I want tonight to be the beginning of our dialogue, as we talk about what we do at DEQ, how we do it, and the specifics of Plant Watson, the rules, federal rules that apply to Plant Watson, and a little bit about the air quality here on our Gulf Coast. Now, Melissa Collier, who heads our Office of Community Engagement, she's handing out our presentation, and I'm gonna be talking from that. You'll also see it here on the screen in front of you, but I'll be talking from this for those of you that have it in the back of the room as well. What do we do at DEQ? We'll talk about that first. We had a great meeting. Our team came down, had a great meeting about what you wanted to hear about. So we first gonna talk about, a little bit about what we do and what the different roles are with different functions within state government. At DEQ, our job is to protect the people of our state, is to protect the environment, and is to protect and manage our natural resources. We do that through our staff. We got chemists, biologists, engineers. We have about 420 men and women who work all across the state to protect the youth. We serve as staff to the Mississippi Environmental Quality Permit Board. We provide information to the permit board. It's a non-member body. They're the ones who actually issue and act upon those approvals that are needed for, that are required for industry to operate, for industry to locate, be able to construct, build, and operate. The permit board, when do they meet? They meet once, they meet once a month, on the 2nd Tuesday in Jackson. You see on page two of the, on the presentation on page two, you see the members there of the permit board. I'm not gonna go over them, you have them there in front of you. That's set out by state statute. That's not anything that DEQ is responsible for. It's been a state statute, I believe, since 1978. We also have another entity that DEQ serves as staff and provides information to, that is our Mississippi Commission on Environmental Quality. The Commission on Environmental Quality, that is a seven-member board, that is appointed by the governor, and usually it's governors, plural, because our commissioners serve seven-year staggered terms. They are from all across the state. The state statute covers the old five congressional districts that is very representative of our state. Your commissioner from here in the Gulf Coast area is Kay Kell. She's from Pascagoula. So that is your, that is your representative on the Commission on Environmental Quality. Now, the difference in the permit board and the commission is this: the permit board, as I already said, issues permits. What does the commission do? Our commissioners, they, they create the policy, the environmental policy, they adopt regulations, they take enforcement actions. regulations, they take enforcement actions. Completely different functions between the Permit Board, the Commission, and the Department of Environmental Quality in their roles and functions. Our Commission on Environmental Quality, we all meet, they all meet in the same location in Jackson, at, at our main office in downtown Jackson. They, we typically meet with the Commission on the fourth Thursday of each month. We're, we're working to try to do some things that are very innovative at the agency. We're trying to get some, trying to get some live cam webcasts of our meetings. We're looking into that, see if we've got the budget to do that so that people don't have to drive to Jackson to see the meetings. You can click on the internet and, and sit there in the internet at home and, and participate and hear and listen to the meetings at the internet. Some of the things we're trying to be innovative and do at your agency. The, one thing that I always like to try to, you know, remind folks about our permitting program and the Permit Board, you know, industry here in Mississippi, when you come to DEQ, our staff, we administer just about all of the federal programs that EPA, federal government has for environmental permits. We, there's, there's one or two exceptions in the hazardous waste area for hazardous waste disposal, but for, for industry and for the issues that we're here to talk about tonight. Our agency processes those applications, has the public meetings, talks with the public, engages with the industry, enforces those permit conditions through delegated agreements with the Environmental Protection Agency. So what does that mean? That means that we, we have a wide interaction with EPA. That means that we're, we're the agency that, that's engaged with, with the issuance and enforcement of permits, but it also means that it's not just DEQ, it's also EPA that is involved in, in the permitting process and the enforcement process here in Mississippi. I'm going to shift gears just a little bit now. If you turn to me on page five, I'm going to go to the environmental justice slide and talk about community engagement and our Office of Community Engagement and, and what brings us here tonight. You know, when, when the, I'll, I'll share with you a personal, a personal moment, if you don't mind. I'm Executive Director now. Before, I was Executive Director and, and there was a, a time when I left DEQ that probably, and, and I was so happy to have an opportunity to come back to DEQ, I was with the legal division. And when I was with the legal division was when the President Clinton's executive order of environmental justice was issued. And so, I was there at DEQ when we were right there. We were right there in the, in the throes and, and working through finding ways for engaging in the community and doing things what we'd never done before at, at a state agency. And so, when I came back as Director, I was, we, we had worked on some internal processes and improvements at the agency, and we, we elevated it to the creation of an Office of Community Engagement. And, and you may be sitting there wondering, why, you know, why did you do that? Why the Office of Community Engagement? And you see there, one thing that always kind of struck with us is meaningful involvement. What is meaningful, you know, meaningful involvement? And if you turn to me on page, I'm going to be looking at page six and then seven on the handouts. When we would go to, you know, we need you, you know. That's why we're so thankful to have the meeting tonight, so that we can, we can talk and, and begin the dialogue about your concerns about Plant Watson. But we do have, we have improved internal coordination and environmental justice training within our organization, and we even have electronic alerts within our organization so that people know that, hey, this is an area where there is unique concerns and interest with the community, and we need to do more than required by, by federal law and state law. The whole point is doing more, reaching out, and, and being a part of your community as much as you want us to be a part in the community in the process. Now, what are we here to talk about tonight? Plant Watson. Now, you have, you have questions about Plant Watson. I'm going to, we've got a lot of information on these slides. I'm not going to go over all the information on the slides because it would take too much of the other speaker's time and take up time away from your questions and comments, which we want to hear and get to. I do want to point out, and I hope you have an opportunity to, to start, to take this and, and have your questions from it. We'll have additional follow-up discussion. You know, we first talk about the air, about the air emissions. You see there on page eight, it's an overview of the air permitting, the air emission units at Plant Watson. You know, what, what I'm hearing is what you're focused on is boilers number four and five, those, those of the coal-fired boilers. You have natural gas and coal boilers at Plant Watson. Boilers four and five of the coal-fired. You see this, you know, Plant Watson's been around, it's been here in, in Harrison County, in the Gulfport community for, since nineteen fifty-five. What you see on the bottom of page eight, beginning in nineteen ninety-three, in the air, in the world of federal air rules, in nineteen ninety-three, we began to see a series of changes in the air rules, improvements in the air rules. And so, you see in nineteen ninety-three, acid rain rules. You'll see on page nine, you'll see Phase Two Acid Rain Permit, units for four and five, Title V Operating Permit. These are all improvements that were, had at Plant Watson because of changes in the air regulations. And the point of that is, is rules change, we hope, we make sure that industries comply with the new rules. As rules change, companies make sure they, they want, they know they got to comply with the new rules, and that's what Plant Watson did. The, on the bottom of page nine, you'll see that in two thousand and seven, there were some new burners that were added to the coal-fired units four and five, low nitrogen oxide burners. That improved air emissions for nitrogen oxide. There again, that was improvements that were made at the plant. The, on the air, it's, the power plant industry is heavily, heavily regulated industry, especially beginning in the, the mid-nineteen nineties, and it continues to be a heavily regulated industry. Now, I know that, you know, my friend Jackie over here at St. Trudy did not regulate enough. I'm here to tell you now, and, and I hear you. And I'm not, I'm not, I don't, I don't refuse or disagree with Jackie's position, but I wanted to share with you, you know, what's happened at the plant. Water. You'll see on pages ten and eleven, power plants need water. We regulate, EPA regulates overseas. EPA has had oversight on all those air permits we just talked about. EPA's had oversight and involvement on those air permits. Same with the wastewater permits. You know, they've got a discharge pipe. They have inside the plant where the water goes, different processes, those are called, you see on those slides, internal outfalls. All that's regulated, all of it's inspected, all of it has limitations. And when I say things have limitations, why does that matter? Why does that matter in our world? And why does, why should it matter to you? All those limitations are based on federal rules that are made to protect people, and they're made to protect the environment, they're made to protect the air quality. That's why it matters. All these rules are in place from the current administration to prior administration that are, that are in effect now. They, they are to protect us. They're to protect the most vulnerable of society, which are the asthmatic children in our communities. And so, that, that's why it matters, and that's why we have this information, just so you can see what, what is being done from a regulatory standpoint. The, on page thirteen of the handout, you know, anytime you burn anything, you've got residents, so you have ash. There is an ash management unit. Again, it's regulated. We've got, we've required groundwater monitoring. It has a handling system that minimizes the dust. It's been improved over the years, as you see. Again, we've got slope, we've got slope requirements, so we don't have any, any failures of ash management unit, of the, of the sidewalks. Again, not going to read through all of this, but just want you to see, we wanted you to have all the information that we had about Plant Watson, about what, what's there, what's regulated, that we can present to you in, in the, in the format tonight to begin this dialogue. The, the rules that apply, I'm going to go to the bottom of page fourteen, the EPA rules that apply to existing coal-fired power plants. The bottom of page fourteen, you see the, you see the beginning of the rules. These are, again, these are federal rules, the acid rain rule, Clean Air Interstate Rule with CARE. You see again, reducing emissions of nitrogen oxide, sulfur dioxide. Require continuous emissions monitoring of sulfur dioxide and nitrogen oxide. That means that there, there, there are pieces of equipment up there that twenty-four-seven monitor what is the nitrogen oxide and sulfur dioxide coming out of that plant. And you say, well, who checks that? Well, we check it, EPA checks it. There, there, there are inspections to check that piece of equipment. And those pieces of equipment run according to EPA protocol. It's not, it's not each state-specific protocol. It is EPA, federal protocol, quality assurance, quality control, and how each of that continuous monitoring equipment has to run. And there are random inspections on, on how that equip, how it runs. Regional haze rule. You see that was promulgated in nineteen ninety-nine, again, going back to the nineteen nineties, amended in two thousand and five. Again, what are we focusing on? Sulfur dioxide, nitrogen dioxide. And you'll see that it's beginning of nineteen nineties, rules began, especially with CARE, again, focusing on reductions, and it's not just the power plant industry. We're here to talk about power plants, as we should be. You're concerned about power plant, that's what we're here to talk about. But there are other industries that, in, in our cars and diesel engines and trains and eighteen-wheelers and, and jet planes, that all have had other requirements that have had changes that impact reductions, that have reductions in sulfur dioxide and nitrogen oxide that have improved our air quality, which is all, which is all, it benefits and all, a really good thing. You see again on page fifteen, what's coming. No, what's coming? Mercury and air-toxic rule. It's, rule's been finalized. Compliance date is April of twenty fifteen. And we also have a greenhouse gas reporting rule of two thousand and nine, and we also are working with the, with the current administration. We're very active, personally very engaged with Region Four and, and the current administration with Ms. McCarthy on the greenhouse gas, gas rules and opportunity for comment. So we have things not only in place now, but that are about to be in place for greenhouse gas emissions. And so, if you're sitting there thinking, what about those new rules? Well, you know, all industry will have to apply, will have to comply with new rules that come into effect down the road. But again, it's, please, you know, please look at this information, and I hope you have questions about it on the specifics about Plant Watson, about how we regulate it, how we work with EPA, and, and what's going on at Plant Watson today. Now, a little bit about the air quality on the Gulf Coast. You know, I've spent some time talking about all those, all those federal rules that have come into place mid-nineteen nineties, and you're going to, you know, why did you talk about all that? Well, it, it matters because Plant Watson had to comply with those rules. It matters because industry all across the Gulf Coast had to comply with those rules. Some of the mobile sources, like your planes, trains, diesel engines, had to comply with those rules. But why does it really matter? Well, it matters because why you're here. It makes it safer for everybody. It makes it safer, makes the air quality, improves the air quality. You have slides over the, the next five slides. This is information that's taken from DEQ's, an actual air monitor here in Harrison County, here in Gulfport, in, yeah, here in Gulfport. It monitors those, those constituents that you're the most concerned about, that are coming from Plant Watson, but also come from other sources. And we're, you know, we're happy to report, we're happy to see, and all this is available on our website, that the air quality on our Gulf Coast is good, and it's improving. It's continuing a downward trend. You have, do you see that?
Better.
Better, getting better. It's good and it's getting better. You see ozone, particulate matter, that's final particles. You have different levels of particulate matter. You have nitrogen dioxide, sulfur dioxide. And you see the number of years that we've been monitoring, but you see, you see how long we've been monitoring, you got two thousand and four, two thousand and three, but you see, you, you see the, the downward trend of, of the line. Now, we want it to keep getting better, but the point of that is, these rules are working. This, it, it's working. The, and we, we want to make sure that you, you have that information and that we, we talk about that information. We have these air monitors all across the state. How many do we have across the state?
Eight.
Eight, yeah. Okay. Eight, eight for ozone, about ten for PM two-point-five, all across the state. It's part of our responsibility through these different programs with EPA. Now, you might be sitting there saying, how can I be saying this and, and the cold-blooded report be saying what they're saying? And that's why we're here. That, that's why we're here, you know, and that, that's why we're all here, so we can talk and exchange this information and understand our concerns and, and learn from it, you know. But this, this is, we, we want you to have this information, know, know what we're doing to, you know, to get our air quality to the point where it's good and continue it to get it better. Plant Watson, where is Plant Watson today? It meets all the current federal rules of the current administration's current rules and existing rules. They meet them all. They have all the permits they're supposed to have, they have them all. And any, those new rules that are going to come into effect in, in the year twenty fifteen, we're going to make them comply with that rule, you know. But there are various way, they got different options and ways to comply with them. But as your Director, you know, I, I work for the taxpayers, I work for you, I work for everybody across the state. We're going to continue to do our job, and we're going to continue to make sure that our quality is not only good, it continues to get better, and along with our water quality across the state. Again, Kathy, thank you. Stori, thank you, and look forward to hearing your comments and questions later in the meeting. Thank you.
I'd like to just follow up on something as just a, a point of moderator privilege. I know a lot of folks in this room, NAACP members that I see, I see some Sierra Club members, Bishop Black, have been to a lot of meetings, and you're the only person in the room bringing up environmental justice. Over the years, it was often the people in the audience that were bringing up that issue. And so, Trudy mentioned the Office of Community Engagement, which I just think is a great thing that MDQ's done. And, and in the back at the table, I'd like to recognize Melissa Collier, for everyone to know, and she's in the Office of Community Engagement. I, I'd just like everyone to be aware that, that her, her job is to work with any community members as permits go on, as other issues, and it's just great to see that environmental justice is finally... justice is finally getting, you know, the real great level of recognition that it deserves. And NDQ is, is doing some honest work on that, so it's a really good thing. Our, our next speaker is Dr. Thomas Dobbs. He's gonna speak on environmental health and safety, and he's with the Department of Environmental Epidemiology.
My name is Thomas Dobbs, I'm the State Epidemiologist with the Department of Health. Epidemiology or Department of Epidemiology really does the disease monitoring functions in the Department of Health. From anything, from cancer, to respiratory disease, to infections, all sorts of things, even in mortality. So, the first thing I'd do is just like thank you, secondly, everyone for inviting me. And the second thing I'd like to say is, after meeting, if anyone has any questions about anything related to disease from states in Mississippi, please, we'll talk about it, because there's so many challenges that we have. Representative Barnes, I talked about HIV earlier, there's a lot of HIV, chronic diseases a big issue in Mississippi in mortality. So, please, at the end of this, if anyone has a special interest or concerns, please talk to me. What we're gonna talk about a little bit today is potential health impacts of the different emissions that we're talking about today that come from coal-fired power plants. And this is gonna be kind of a brief overview, nothing too, oh, great, nothing too chatty, but just so we all know what we're talking about. So, one of the things that we're worried about that are coming, we're gonna talk really about air right now, what are the things in the air that you're worried about that can come from a power plant? So any sort of combustion, a diesel engine per se, can do the same sort of thing. We're gonna talk a little bit about ozone, which is basically three oxygen molecules put together. Ozone is good up high because it blocks ultraviolet radiation, right, but it's bad down low. And one of the things that makes ozone a lot is, cars, I mean, ozone's a poor, so fortunately those have improved, improved standards. Ozone is bad because it can irritate the, the lungs, and when people breathe in ozone, it causes respiratory irritation, then can trigger asthma attacks and bronchitis, and so that's one of the things about the air quality, some work on ozone. Ozone can come from boilers, motor vehicles, and refineries and chemical plants. One of the other emissions that we talked about is nitrogen oxide. It, again, can create respiratory irritation, asthma, bronchitis, and again, the same sort of places, basically anything that burns, hydrocarbons can cause these things. You know, natural gas is maybe cleaner because it's a purer form, but pretty much any hydrocarbon can produce these sort of things. Now sulfur dioxide is one of the other ones, we're talking about, causes bronchopneusia and actually can trigger cardiac issues, and primarily comes from burning of oil and coal, particularly high sulfur pertaining forms of coal. And then this other thing, PM 2.5, do you, everybody know what that is? It's one of the more important emissions that has been monitored, and it's actually small particles, a little bit of particulate, basically soot. It's so small that people can breathe it in and can get deep in their lungs, that's one of the reasons why it can be, be worrisome, because it can get past the defenses of the mucus and the throat, it can eat down the lungs and cause problems. And this one can cause decreased lung function and excessive asthma, and that's one of the reasons why it's been such an important tool being monitored as far as air quality. So, there are PM 2.5 standards, and this is a lot of same stuff that DEQ had talked about previously, but I'll just go over quickly, you can't see all of it, but there are monitoring stations throughout the state, so this is information that is publicly available. And you can see, fortunately, all the monitoring sites in Mississippi have stayed below the standards. Where does PM 2.5 come from? Actually, mostly it comes from dust, but it can come from multiple sources, including motor vehicles, industrial processes, fuel combustion, which is good with a lot of power plants. And this is, this is Mississippi data, and you can see, when we talk about fuel combustion, it's gonna be mostly industrial boilers and electrical generation. We have information even on Harrison County, and all this is actually public data from EPA most likely. So it's pretty neat, so I encourage everyone to explore and, and see different things. And you can see, for Harrison County, most of it's miscellaneous, and actually miscellaneous is solid waste disposal. I didn't know that would generate so much particles. But then you can see fuel combustion, but for Harrison County, most of the fuel combustion via PM 2.5 comes from electric generation. When we talk about our different standards, and this is stuff that Fish Rink demonstrated, fortunately, we have seen a decline in ozone over the past years. We've seen, oh, and this is just a monitoring station, it shows that here's the, the power plant, here's the monitoring station, you can see down the bottom, it's about 3.1. So, we'll talk about health data. Now, population health data is different than individual health data. So we can monitor broad trends, but it's hard to distinguish one cause from the other. So, we're gonna look a little bit about heart disease rates and acid emissions, these are some things that we have access to. Unfortunately, we've seen that the decrease in heart mortality in Mississippi in the red line, and you can see Harrison and Jackson County have been kind of erratic, but pretty much mirrored that trend. So fortunately, we've seen a decline. That probably doesn't have a whole lot to do with risk, because there's so many factors that contribute to heart disease, including cholesterol and hypertension. So it's good that we've seen some decline. There's no real difference that we can tell for Harrison County and Jackson County compared to the state average. And this is heart disease mortality in non-whites, which is gonna be pretty similar to that for, for Caucasians. And then asthma-related hospitalizations, there's two stories here. Basically, Harrison County mirrors, or is no worse than the, than the, than the state average for asthma emissions. You see horrible disproportionate effect on African-American communities, which is a whole different story, and probably has nothing to do with Harrison County. We do know that there are severe health disparities in African-American community around asthma, and also some other things that get to a whole lot of other complicated issues. So there's so much work for us to do, for so many reasons, that's why I said there's just so many health concerns, if anyone wants to talk about anything. They all kind of go hand in hand, and it's hard to talk about public health. That's really all I had, I wanted to talk about, by just an overview about different issues and kind of where the health concerns are, and some of the trends that we've seen over the past years. We're looking at more and more cancer mortality, and cancer incidents. The only thing that's popped up for Harrison County has been the lung cancer incidence, big cancer, seem a little bit higher, but we seem to correlate those with tobacco, unfortunately, and then sun exposure. But these are data that we're hoping to be able to deal with. Thanks, Good, for having me, and I look forward to talking to, continuing one during the question and answer session and afterwards.
Thanks, Dr. Dobbs.
So, I think we're going to have, since then, now, from the American Lung Association. If we, I'm just going to make sure you can see her, she's... And I'm gonna put the mic to my microphone, to my speakers, and hopefully you can hear her. Okay, Suzanne, are you ready? Okay.
You can hear me already?
Yes, sir.
Okay. First of all, thank you for having me here, I really appreciate your allowing us to join you by Skype. We have a staff person close by there, choose teaching a class somewhere else tonight, so I'm joining you from St. Louis, Missouri, and I'm very grateful for you to allow me to be there. The American Lung Association, as you probably know, has a long history of working on clean air issues. We started originally to eradicate tuberculosis, and we've been working on that all along, and done a pretty good job working with public health officials across the US, and so that's not as much of a problem as it used to be. We work on tobacco use prevention. We work a lot on clean air issues, which is why I'm here today. I've been working at the Lung Association on clean outdoor air issues for about 17 years. And it's my privilege to do that. We have a couple of things. I'll just be brief, because a lot of what I have to say, well, some of what you've heard already, we have a couple of reports, though, that speak to the importance of clean air and the gravity of the health impacts of air pollution. We have something called the State of the Air, which is a report that comes out every year, and looks at three years' worth of data for ozone pollution, which you just heard about, ozone basically being a sunburn to your lungs, when you put it simply. And particle pollution, which is that soot that comes, a lot of it comes from power plants. And so there's basically a long list of, of health effects from ozone pollution and particle pollution. Can you still hear me okay, Jackie? Okay. Okay. I wanna just, and we have something, the State of the Air, and then we have something called the Toxic Air Report, that looks specifically at air pollution from power plants. There's, there's a lot of hazardous air pollution from power plants. Something that I want to say here that I think is important for you to keep in mind is, is something that's been striking to me over the years. So we've seen, and you may have heard, I was disconnected from you for a little bit, so I didn't hear everything that you've heard, but we've seen over the years that there are improvements in air pollution levels, right? I'm sure you've heard that, people have said that air pollution is getting to be less of a problem. However, this is a big however. At the same time as air pollution levels seem to be improving, there are also, I would be willing to say, every week, a study comes out saying how much worse air pollution is for our health than we originally thought. So, even if we're meeting, or coming close to meeting, or sometimes meeting standards that are set by the government, and, and those are standards based on very fine data that's coming from monitors, even if we're meeting all those standards, this is what I say to the classes I teach on air pollution. How much air pollution is a good amount of air pollution? Well, that would be zero, right? So we've a lot of work yet to do, and the process of burning coal lets a whole bunch of chemicals into the atmosphere. No matter how good the controls are that are on a power plant, there's a vast number of threats to air, water, soil, and these pollutants come out of there, hazardous air pollutants, they're commonly called air toxics. This is really serious stuff. There's, there's all kinds of things they can do. They can simply irritate your eyes, they can cause all sorts of respiratory and cardiac problems, you heard some of those from some of the previous speakers. They can cause long-term exposure problems with kidneys, lungs, nervous system, this is not to mention the impact on children and people who live closer to sources of this type of pollution. So, there's, there's lots of solutions. Putting controls on power plants is one of the solutions, but it's not the only solution. Renewable energy sources are a solution. And I have a whole list of things that, I just wanted to list out for you, a couple of kind of like factoids, small things to keep in mind. But if you take away one thing from what I've said, what, what I want you to take away is that no air pollution is good air pollution, and so that means that we have to keep working on reducing air pollution levels. And even when the, we're meeting standards, or close to meeting standards, we're gonna find out in a minute that those are not certain enough, we need to have them be stricter to protect public health. So, here, I'm just gonna list a few things, because I think that they're kind of impactful. More than four in 10 people live in counties with unhealthful levels of ozone or particle pollution. Those both have really serious health impacts on pretty much everybody. You don't have to be a child, or somebody with lung disease, or elderly, every single category of person is affected by air pollution. Let's see, another one that's, that's really impactful is, nearly 45 million people in the US live in an area that has an unhealthy year-round level of particle pollution. Particle pollution increases your risk of hospitalization from asthma, it damages your lungs, and it can increase the risk of premature death, not to mention the impacts that it has on people who are already somehow compromised with lung disease. And, and here's a few things I think would be helpful to note that you can do. Getting coal-fired power plants to clean up and close when needed, looking at alternative sources of power, looking at going above and beyond what's required, or putting controls on. One of the things that's important to notice is that some of the foods for power plants can also travel, so it's not just those who are right most at the power plant, but it could be lots of different places, not just right there, it's impacted, and, and the health effects are weak, getting found out to be worse and worse than we thought. I, I think that, in the interest of time, and I know that you have lots of other speakers lined up, I will, I would just move by telling you, I'm sorry, I have all these things running out here, because I want to make sure I share it, some of the things that you can do, sending a message to Congress, being part of something like this town hall meeting that you're doing tonight is really important, it shares, you share with other people in your community and people across the whole region how important this is, and you become informed, and then you make your voice heard. Tell the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency to set the tighter standards, keep getting the standards tighter, keep making it more protective of public health. The Lung Association has a very good network for sharing their story, since we do most of our work on lung health. If you have lung health, asthma, or other breathing stories to share, we have a really good network for getting the word out, getting that to elected officials, making sure that they can use your stories to show decision-makers why standards need to be stricter, and plants that should be closed need to be closed. And then there are the several things like driving less, using less electricity, and getting it wrong like you are tonight. I think Jackie, will you have questions at the end?
Yes, yes, I'd be interested.
All right, so I'll be right here if you need me, and thank you for having me. We have some great resources, which Jackie will give you my email address, and if you want me to send you any of you who are there, the audience, about specifics on your area and air pollution in our reports. The reason that I didn't focus on that so much is that the grades that you got in Harrison County were not, for particle pollution, the grade was not bad, for ozone pollution, it was a D, not an F, but a D is not great. But the reason I don't share specifically the fact that you passed on the particle pollution grade is because any amount of particle pollution is problematic. Getting a passing grade doesn't mean that there's no health impact. So I'd be happy to share any of this specific data with you individually, or as group, however you like. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. And we have two more speakers who are gonna give some, some brief comments, and then we're gonna go to questions. So our next speaker is also coming in by Skype. She's from the Union of Concerned Scientists. It's Leslie Fleischman, and she's gonna be speaking on the methodology and analysis of Jack Watson from the Right for Retirement Study. Leslie?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
And are you able to see my slides? Okay, great, so I'll let you know when we go to the next slide. So I'm an energy analyst and an concerned scientist, and I'm not supposed to speak about my report, Right for Retirement, for closing American's office in this whole plant, and I'll focus specifically on the results for the Jack Watson plant. I published the report last year, but since then, we've updated the data, so the results that I'll present today reflect that updated data. All right, next slide. Our power sector is going through a period of unprecedented dynamic change. Our stored reliance on coal-fired power is decreasing as aging power plants are being used less or retired. This creates a historic opportunity for a transition to cleaner energy sources, if we make some better choices now. The report examined the rest of the state through an economic lens, seeing whether generators may be uncompetitive relative to current generation sources, actually considered for retirement. Next slide. Today's U.S. public data, with over 260 watts or 77% of total capacity already exceeded the normal 30-year life expectancy. The Jack Watson unit, for it is 45 years old, and unit five is 40 years old, spoke about the 30-year life expectancy. Next slide. Our generators deemed right for retirement are also among the journalists nationwide. Ask Jerry to back proper order. Can you hear me now?
I think you guys hear it now.
Oh.
Can you hear a little bit louder?
Okay, sure. Is this better?
Yeah, clear at the back.
All right. All right.
I don't know my accent.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you just hear a lot of talk, so great, sorry.
Sure, sure. Okay, so as might have been mentioned earlier, Jack Watson has insufficient pollution controls in all four major categories, first SOX, NOx, particulates, and mercury. Next slide. So many coal plant owners around the country have concluded that paying for costly upgrades to keep their outdated coal plants running is a bad investment, particularly now that there are many lower-cost alternatives that can replace old coal units while maintaining the reliability of the electric system. More than 60 gigawatts has already been announced to retirement. And our report looked at the economic vulnerability of the remainder of the coal fleet. Next slide. So this slide showed our basic economic analysis of the Jack Watson plant. We estimated the base running costs of each operating unit and compared it to the alternatives. However, this is not the full story. As noted previously, Jack Watson, like many old coal plants, lacks essential pollution controls. So if we go to the next slide, here we added the cost of the four important pollution controls for SOX, NOx, mercury, and particulates that were lacking. Then when we compare the costs of the coal generators with the alternatives, we see a different story. Here, the coal generators, as upgraded with modern pollution controls, are more expensive to run than the alternatives, which are existing natural gas plants, new natural gas plants, and wind power facilities. So this means that it is cheaper to retire and replace Jack Watson rather than spending money to upgrade it with modern pollution controls. Next slide. To look at these results in a different way, this scatter plot shows the operating costs of all the coal generators in the country. Each black dot on the plot represents the costs of an individual coal generator as a function of its 2011 capacity factor. The blue line is the operating costs of a new natural gas life cycle facility, and the red is the cost of an existing natural gas facility. The fact that the Jack Watson units, which are the orange and green units here, are above those lines means that they are more expensive, and therefore, we consider them right for retirement. And next slide. So here's what we found at the national level. A significant number of coal generators are right for retirement from, at the low estimate 172 units, at the high estimate 309 units, which is between 18.4 and 53.2 gigawatts of generating capacity. And also, a significant amount of coal generation is right for retirement compared to new wind power facilities, that's really more without the production tax credit for wind. So next slide. I'll just close by highlighting a few of the recommendations from our report. The closure of right-for-retirement coal units presents a historic opportunity to accelerate a transition to a clean energy economy. And the national state policies and regulations could play a crucial role in promoting and supporting that transition. We think that regulators, investors, and utilities should rethink costly environmental requirements for aging coal plants, and instead invest in cleaner, more affordable alternatives. States should require regulated utilities to conduct comprehensive resource planning. And finally, strong state and federal clean energy policies are needed, including strong renewable energy and energy efficiency standards. All right, so next slide. Thank you for, thanks again for inviting me to speak. Here is my contact information. You can also get in touch with Jackie, and she can put you in touch with me. I'd be happy to take any questions now or if you need help.
Thank you, Leslie. Please stay by for some questions. And we have one more speaker before we begin our questions. It's Mark Lothman, and he's the Environment and Resource Energy Director with Mississippi Power Company, and he's going to speak on corporate environment responsibility. Mark?
Good evening. Again, my name is Mark Lothman with Mississippi Power Company, and I'm very happy to be with you this evening. I wanted to talk about our corporate environmental responsibility, but before I did, again, thank you, Kathy and others, for inviting us because we are part of this community. My wife and I have made our home here for 18 years. I grew up in Hattiesburg, but I've been, I got here as quickly as I could. And we have three kids that have been raised within, you know, three miles of Plant Jack Watson. And there is no one more concerned about the quality of our air than I am. So I'm happy to be here with you today. Before I talk about our environmental commitment, let me talk just for a minute about Mississippi Power Company. Most of you who are local know Mississippi Power Company. For those of you who aren't here, we are a small subsidiary of Southern Company. There's four companies within Southern, one of the smallest, founded in 1925, right here in Gulfport, and we serve about 186,000 customers. The reason I wanted to show you this slide is that we serve these 23 counties about southeastern Mississippi, and the stars on the map represent where our power plants are. So, you know, when you turn on your air conditioning, or you turn on the lights when you get off the work, where does that power come from? It comes from plants like Plant Jack Watson. Jack Watson, you can't see at the bottom of the screen there, but it's in the center of the coast, basically, in Harrison County. Our other large power plant is in Jackson County. Plant Eaton in Hattiesburg actually retired at the end of last year. We have a smaller gas-fired plant up in Meridian. We own part of the power plant in Alabama. And the red star, of course, is the Kemper County Energy Facility, which has been in the news a lot for those of you who are local. So first of all, I want to, I want to kind of stress one thing to you, and that is, when we talk about Mississippi Power Company, we're talking about the employees of Mississippi Power Company, because we are the company. And those of you who have interacted with our folks at Mississippi Power Company kind of know what, you know, what kind of people we are. We expect our employees to not only, you know, keep the lights on and to get the lights back on after a storm, we expect our employees to behave in a way that their grandparents would be proud of. We take our commitment to safety very, very seriously. We have led the industry, the electric utility industry, for decades, really, in our safety performance. We make all of our decisions, whether it's about retiring a plant, or building a new transmission line, or installing smart meters, with the idea of how is this going to impact our customers? And we conduct our business fairly, honestly, and with integrity. And of course, for those of you who are local, know that we are involved, very, very involved in our communities, and we take our environmental commitment very seriously. You may have seen me and my son on the news last week. We have this annual Renew Our Rivers event, and we removed about nine tons of debris from Turkey Creek to the Back Bay the first week of October, and then get about nine tons out of the Passas Gula River. So we take a lot of pride in our environmental commitment and our stewardship efforts. So one thing I think is very important to understand when you talk about the decisions that we make as a company, we are a regulated public utility. And for most people, including, you know, me, when I came to work for the Power Company, I had no idea what that means. Well, it means that we have a lot of bosses, as you will. We have a lot of stakeholders that we have to keep happy. We have to, we have to keep our customers happy. What do customers want? They want low-power bills, they want the lights to come on and stay on. What do communities want? What do y'all want from us? You want us to engage in efforts like this. You want us to be leaders in the community. You expect us to be engaged and to have responsibility, including environmental responsibility. And then let's talk about the regulators. You know, as a public utility, we're regulated by the Mississippi Public Service Commission. You know, people say we have a monopoly. It's true, we have the right to serve our customers within a certain region, but with that monopoly right comes a lot of obligations about serving customers with certain reliability standards. They set our pricing or our rates for our customers. They have to approve all major expenditures. You know, one of the earlier speakers talked about, you should do more than what's required by the law. Let's make it clear, the Public Service Commission is going to make us do what's required by law, but they're not going to allow us to do anything more than that, because those costs flow directly to you as rate payers and directly to me. I've been a Mississippi power customer my entire adult life. And of course, shareholders, shareholders of Southern Company want a fair return on their investment. So what you, what you came to talk or to hear from us is what's our environmental commitment? What's our corporate environmental responsibility? First and foremost, the foundation of our strategy is meeting the rules. And you heard from Ms. Fisher and others, we have consistently met the rules. For a small company with 1,200 employees, I have 14 people on my staff that do nothing but try to interpret all these ever-changing environmental rules and figure out how we're going to comply, because that's never a question. We're always going to meet the rules. And then the second thing, and I think you've heard from some of the other speakers, is we are proud of the progress that we've made. You know, since 1992, we've spent over $300 billion on environmental controls at Watson, Plant Jack, uh, Jack Watson, Victor Daniel, and others. Rest of the CO2 emissions are down by more than 50%. NOx is down by 70%. And at that same time, the demand, our customers' demand for electricity has grown by 50%. Now, I was curious about that, so I looked at what were the figures actually for Plant Watson. So I went to the EPA Clean Air Markets Program data. CO2 emissions from Plant Watson have been down, between 2000 and 2012, were down 56%. NOx is down 80%. CO2, which we don't have a limit for in our permit, but which we do track, is down 66% or two-thirds. We have made significant progress, and we know that we'll be making more progress as these titles come online. And the other thing, put up there open and transparent, Herman Williams is somewhere here. Herman is the plant manager of Plant Watson. So Herman and I share responsibility for the environmental performance of that plant. We have to sign the reports, and I can guarantee you that we accurately monitor our emissions and accurately report them to the MDUQ and to the EPA. That's never a question. And the other thing, I talked a little bit about our stewardship efforts. We have, we take a lot of pride in the fact that hundreds of our employees get engaged in environmental stewardship projects. You've seen some of this already, but Plant Watson has six, six electric generating units starting in 1957. And I, you know, I would point out that in 1954 or so, when we started the process of construction, we applied for our permit in 1955, that area was really undeveloped. It wasn't that we were moving into a community that was populated by anybody, let alone, you know, weighted towards any race or ethnicity. So we started building a plant in 57. The two bigger units that we've talked about, units four and five, came online in 68 to 73. Even in 1973, there was no I-10 right there where it is today. So the area was relatively unpopulated. Now, the important thing I want you to take away from this slide is those two larger units are fired by both coal or natural gas or both. So we have the ability, when coal prices are very high relative to gas prices, as they've been as recently as last year, to run the units on gas or vice versa. And that works great for our customers, because your fuel costs are a complete, you know, direct pass-through on your bill. And so the plant has had a long history of safe and reliable operations, a great environmental track record, which we're proud of, and it's been a great source of stable, good-paying jobs for decades. This is something that others have touched on. I went and pulled this off the internet yesterday, but this is from the EPA's website, but the data is from July 31st of this year. And it shows the areas within the U.S. that are having problems meeting the federal air quality standards. So the good news is, the state of Mississippi, almost the entire state except for half of, Sono County, I guess, is entomated with all six of the primary pollutants that the EPA and the Clean Air Act were focused on. Now, what does that mean? Trudy touched on it earlier. EPA specifically says that those standards, the toxicologists working up at the EPA set those standards to protect even the most vulnerable populations, asthmatics, children, and the elderly. So what that tells you is, the story that we've heard from some of these reports is that we have a grim story in South Mississippi, but the truth is, we have very good air quality. So let's kind of take a look ahead. We understand that the rules are changing. They're always changing. In fact, when I give presentations to our management team, and I lay out a timeline of all the different rules that are coming down, we call it, we affectionately call it the train wreck, because we are one of the most regulated industries in the United States. Make no doubt, though, we're going to comply with the rules. We know that the mercury rule that was talked about earlier, we're currently spending $660 million of Plant Daniel to comply with that rule. The good news about that is Gulf Power owns half of it, so they pay for half of those controls. But those controls, we couldn't start construction of those controls until the Public Service Commission gave us a certificate of public, public convenience and necessity. They wouldn't give us that certificate to build those controls until the rule was finalized and we could demonstrate to their satisfaction that there was no other way that we could operate those units. And we know that there are other rules coming. Trudy talked about a few of them, but we have water rules. We have rules around our ash and other coal combustion byproducts, greenhouse gas. We expect the EPA to revisit the ozone standard sometime next year. We anticipate that these rules are going to impact us. So we are always evaluating what our options are, including for Plant Watson. We know that we have some tough decisions to make at Plant Watson. The great story or the great news for us and for our customers is that we have options at Plant Watson. Unlike at Plant Daniel, where we had no option but to put those scrubbers on, those units at Plant Daniel only operate on coal. These units can and do switch fuels regularly. So at the very least, we've got the ability to operate on gas. So, you know, what I would kind of say in closing, I would recap, I guess my main message is that we're proud of our environmental record at Mississippi Power. We've had a very solid compliance record, and we will continue to have a solid compliance record. Second thing is, I'm not sure where some of these reports have come from, but from everything that I have seen, the air quality that you enjoy on the Gulf Coast is good. I have no problems with my children's growing up here, and it's getting better. That's probably one of the most significant points. And I guess the last thing is, you know, we live here, we're your neighbors. Nobody cares more about the quality of the air and the water than those employees at Mississippi Power make. So thank you for your attention. Thanks for the invitation, and I hope I can answer your questions.
Thanks, Mark. And everyone, thanks for your patience. We've overcome a little earlier technical difficulty, so...
If you want to raise your hand so we can get started with our question and answer session. Ms. Dorie Howard. Yes, her name is...
For this history of Plant Jack Watson, I was surprised to notice there was not permitted for waste disposal until 2003, which is just, what, 10 years ago? And I'm curious, is what you were going to ask before then? Did it go to landfills, or was it disposed up to the power grid? And is there a manifest or some type of record of the storage going?
Mr. Howard.
Yeah, the, the, as I understand it, the permit came about when we converted to the, to the dry ash collection prior to that, which was kind of practice in the industry. The fly ash and the bottom ash were collected together and stored on-site at the ash pond there at Plant Watson. So all of that material is still on-site at Plant Watson, along with the bottom ash at the plant. It is at Plant Jack Watson, correct. And she, Trudy talked a little bit about the groundwater monitoring, and actually, the state of Mississippi is pretty progressive. Of all of the Southern Company, operating companies that we talked about earlier, we're the only ones within that four-state region that have to monitor the groundwater around our facilities. So in preparation for this, I said, okay, what, I talked to my people, said, what's the, what's the... the, what's the, what do the results look like? So I've gotten in here somewhere. So we, we test for a couple of field parameters like pH and water level and things like that, but we, we look for those toxins that you might expect could be a trace contaminant in coal, arsenic, cadmium, selenium, chlorides, sulfate, and sodium. And we've been monitoring for these, for these, for many years, and most of those constituents have never been detected, like arsenic, cadmium. Selenium was detected once since we've been monitoring, and it was at background levels, meaning it was at levels that you would expect to exist naturally in the environment. So we do see chloride, sodium, and sulfates, but at levels that are many times below the standards for those chemicals. So we do not have any concerns about any of that material that's been put in the, in the sites there, that it's not getting into the waterways.
Okay, thank you. Our next question?
I'm Mary Stinkstign. I've never lived anywhere but north of Gulfport. My son was born with asthma. My daughter born with bronchitis. I'm an asthma person also every now and then. Had an asthma attack everywhere a year ago. So I'm very, I listen to you all, but I didn't get much information of a blessing for us. And Mr., is it Lothman? Lothman? Oh, I missed Mark. Okay. From Mississippi Power. I'd like to remind you, when you go back to your office, there's a young gentleman that made a very degrading disrespect, medically non-sound statement to our community a couple of weeks ago about asthma patients. And it's not medically sound. So would you take him on that and tell him never do that again, please? My question is mainly to Jack Watson. You said that you used gas, natural gas, for seven years. Then you started using coal and natural gas. Coal sends out black smoke, am I right? Coal sends out black smoke, but natural gas doesn't. Is that right? Because it's clean, clean.
Recipitators work with either fuel?
I can't hear you good.
Recipitators, the control device is working. You won't see smoke with either fuel.
He does not exceed smoke.
Yeah, if we see smoke, we see that.
Okay. And Ms. Trudy, have you, Ms. Fisher, have you all done medical statistics since you worked for us about what's better now than before? I've been in North Gulfport 49 years, okay? But I'd like to know why or what about heart diseases, asthma, dialysis? You talked about, somebody talked about kidneys. Dialysis is rampant in our community. Sciences, nobody mentioned that. That has a problem also, that can lead to an asthma attack. Tell me what your medical statistics work is doing to make sure you get safe.
Hackett. Two ways that we work with the medical statistics and medical information. The first way is the way you heard tonight with the gentleman from the Health Department who came and talked about and looks, works with our staff, works with our engineers, looks at the information, gathers information from the community, from the health officials here in, in the communities. We work all across the state in evaluating what's happening in the communities, what's happening, whether it's a concern of high cancer risk, kidney failure, blood disease, whatever the, whatever the concerns are. That, that's one one. The other way is the basic foundation of these rules that industry has to comply with. The federal rules, there are, there are toxicologists, health officials, that the very foundation of these rules, they have a human health protection component. That's what their whole, the whole purpose is to protect people, to protect the most vulnerable in our society, the asthmatic child, the asthmatic elderly person. So that's, that's that health component there. So what we do, our job, is to go implement those rules. And so that's, that's the other health component. We don't have health officials, we don't have doctors on our staff, but we rely on the expertise of others.
But do you do the medical statistics? You can do that research yourself, can't you, in your department?
Well, we got, we got the expertise, we got the expertise of, of Mary Courier and her staff, just right there. And so it's, you know, that's, we've got their, we've got their expertise, we've got the expertise of, of the federal government that we rely on, and our own expertise with our own state government. Rather than doing it ourselves, it's much more efficient, much more expertise at our own state health department.
How do we get it across the house? That's the most important, so our people will know. Because then if they come to these meetings, most of them are not even able, and most of them got to go to work, children on nine-week tests, all kinds of things going on. So how do we get your information that will help our community from door to door? And I thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And I think it's, I'll just repeat, Hackett, this, you know, this is the beginning of our dialogue, so we can continue to get that information out and look for...